The hour is 5:30. Welcome to the regular session of your Dambler City Commission for Tuesday, November the 13th, Give you just a moment and let everybody get professionally situated.
I wasn't going to call you out.
But Commissioner Cottle just did. Make note of that.
You said good things about him too, didn't you?
Looking to my left, looking to my right, I believe we have a quorum. I'll ask that we be led in prayer this evening by Commissioner J. H. Atkins.
And I'd like to do something a little different tonight. We've done this before, but in my reading of real news, the 310th day of 2018, there've been over 300 public shootings in these United States of America. And since Sunday, we just celebrated Veterans' Day. I'd like to just have a moment of silence and remembrance of those who have served and those who are serving, and also to our first responders who are sort of fighting a war inside these United States of America. So if you would.
Thank you, sir. If you'll stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, you've had before you tonight's agenda. Unless I hear otherwise, I will assume it meets your approval. That said, we will move right into the section we call "Hear the Public." This is the opportunity for the public to have three minutes at the podium to address the commission on any subject that is on tonight's agenda. There'll be an opportunity later in the meeting to do the same on any subject not on tonight's agenda. So, anyone for "Hear the Public"? Seeing none, we'll move right along into Item 1, which is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, that meeting being October the 22nd, 2018. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Serres, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Any discussion? Seeing none, the chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 2 is the proclamation of Dambler Arbor Day, which is November the 15th. Alexis, if you'll join me at the podium, please. And it used to be Americe, and just about the time I get comfortable saying that name, you change it. What's the Mary name?
Sheffield.
Sheffield. That's a whole lot easier. Allow me to read this, ma'am. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton of Nebraska City proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed in the United States with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas the Arbor Day Foundation has a mission, quote, "to inspire people to plant, nurture, and celebrate trees." And Arbor Day is now celebrated throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, water, excuse me, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the city of Dambler will celebrate Dambler Arbor Day by planting a tree in the community on November 15th, 2018, to further enhance the quality of life and beauty in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor G. Michael Paris and the city commissioners of the city of Dambler on this 13th day of November do hereby recognize Thursday, November 15th, as Arbor Day, and further urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and all future generations. Ms. Sheffield, if you will accept this.
Yes, I would love to.
Of course you would.
On behalf of the trees.
And please, feel free to make any comments on behalf of the trees.
On behalf of the trees, thank you for continuing to plant our trees. And I think we've got another item on the agenda that we'll further talk about, trees.
I move that we accept the proclamation as read into the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Need these people up front. Janet Hamner, front and center. Rick Henry, Ronnie H., front and center. I'm glad you didn't go far. And Bo, front and center.
What have you got on your feet, Bo?
Y'all line up up here so I can see you.
Should I put my dress down?
Uh-oh, watch out.
This is Proclamation Tree City, USA, 2018. Whereas the city of Dambler has recertified, was recertified, as a Tree City, USA, community in 2014, and was given the original Tree City designation in 1993, and whereas trees help to combat climate change as they absorb excess and harmful CO2 from our atmosphere, and in a single year, an acre of mature trees absorbs the same amount of CO2 produced by driving the average car 26,000 miles, and whereas trees help preserve the historical value of our community and increase the property value of our homes, helping our community achieve long-term economic and environmental sustainability, and whereas since the designation as a Tree City, USA, the city of Dambler has, with the leadership of Alexis Sheffield, no longer Americe, held Earth Day and Arbor Day celebrations and updated the tree ordinance, and whereas since the designation as a Tree City, USA, the city of Dambler has applied for and been awarded KU's Plant the Planet grant for new tree planting since 2014 under the leadership of Dr. Bo Weston, Janet Hamner, and Alexis Americe Sheffield. And whereas each year, over $5,000 is raised locally to match the KU grant, which allows the city to plant over 50 trees each year. This is through a partnership where the citizens raise the money, KU matches dollars raised, the county extension service picks the species, the beautification committee secures the sites, and the city of Dambler Public Works Department plants the trees. And whereas in 2017, the city of Dambler Public Works Department employees planted 25 tulip poplars to mark the 225th anniversary of Kentucky statehood and an additional 50 trees in other areas of Dambler, and whereas the city of Dambler Public Works Department employees have been instrumental in the planting of over 275 trees over the past five years. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor G. Michael Paris and the city commissioners of the city of Dambler on this 13th day of November 2018 hereby affirms their support to remain a Tree City, USA, and gives thanks to Dr. Bo Weston, Janet Hamner, Alexis Sheffield, and the city of Dambler Public Works Department employees for their dedication and service to the city of Dambler. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Yay, trees.
Do you want to say anything, Bo, or?
I have a brief moment next.
Okay.
Okay. I move to accept the proclamation, Tree City, USA, 2018.
Thank you, Commissioner Serres. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cottle is, he'll be a little quicker on the draw next. Any discussion?
I'd like to make a comment. I think that this is naturally is a proud moment for us, as it has been in years past. And I don't think Alexis has any issue with this, but when it comes to celebrations, we probably ought to mention Preston Miles on Earth Day because he's very instrumental in organizing that particular event, which Alexis and myself are on that committee, but he's the one that's really spearheading that one, correct? Okay.
Any further comments? Thanks for that, Rick. Seeing none, the chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 4 is Resolution Number 2018-11-13-01. This is the KU Plant the Planet grant application. Dr. Weston, would you like to explain further, please?
Yes, indeed. Yes, I have the happy business of coming before you twice a year. In the fall, I come to ask permission to ask for money, and usually in the spring, I get to come back and say, yay, we got the money. We raised the money a year ahead of its planting. So we raised the money last year for the trees that our noble tree planters are going to start planting on Thursday and keep going. Janet was telling me that we're going to plant 240 trees, 80 some of which are from this grant project, and then others come from other sources. For next year, and that's the action item we're heading to, is your permission to apply for this grant, we have indeed already raised $5,000 locally. It's now to the point where people look forward to this every year. They come up to me on the street and hand me checks. It's a good deal. I got to be a guest quiz master at Trivia at Plank, and they donated all of the cover fees for that to trees, so another community source I hadn't even thought of. So we will be having 5,000, asking for the 5,000 match, so we, I hope, will have 10,000 for next year's planting with your permission to make that application.
Do I hear a motion?
I will gladly move that we approve Resolution Number 2018-111301.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Well done, sir.
How many years have we been doing this now?
So this, we're about to start the fifth year of planting, and we're asking for the sixth year of money.
Dr. Weston, I think the commission may be interested in how many donors typically make up the $5,000 raised, because I think that's quite remarkable, too.
Yeah, it's 40. The Rotary has given a lead gift, Garden Club has given a lead gift. I want to lift up Jeff and Karen Thornton, who are usually our leaders, and give me a check earlier and earlier in the year each year. And Dambler Bike and Fitness and other individuals. It's not always the same group, but we've added some every year, and I think we have a good expectation that this is a thing that we will just keep doing. I'd initially said this was, in my head, a 10-year project, but I don't think we're going to stop when we get to year 10. We'll just keep going and plant the planet.
And also, the sizes of the gifts probably range from anywhere from $10 to $500. Is that probably accurate?
$500 is not the top.
Okay.
Yeah.
Point being, $10 gifts are made, and there's plenty of...
No amount's too small. Anybody wants to give me money right now? Totally cool. That goes to next year's application.
If someone wanted to donate, can they, is there an address you can give out, or how would they do that?
Wilderness Trace Community Foundation. They're the holders of that, and I have to say, our city attorney, in one of his other hats, sees to it that the checks are taken care of, the tax documents are done, the records are kept well. So everybody holds hands and works together. Alexis de Tocqueville would be proud. Sorry?
Anything else? Okay, so, no further questions. Chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Bo.
Very good. I'll go back in the spring, tell you how it turned out.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott?
Did we mention in this discussion of our trees that we do have that planting on Thursday, the 15th, I believe? That should be covered by our local press, and because the community is interested in that's at noon planting, rain, shine, or snow, at 12:00 noon out Lexington Avenue towards Old Lexington.
Lexington Avenue? Is that what you said? Lexington Avenue?
It's out past, I was looking for Earl. It's at the, almost before 2168 on the right at Old Lexington Road. It's out there right at that kind of intersection.
Close to where the trail begins?
Yes.
Okay.
And you expect all the commissioners to be there?
Those that are available and have a shovel handy, you know, hand-ready, you know.
That's right. That's right. So noted. Thank you. Item 5 is Planning and Zoning Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Goals and Objectives. Mr. Hunter?
So we've got two items on the agenda here, back to back. One on the screen's not the one we're on now. That'll be the next one. But the goals and objectives should be in your packet and should be a page. Hopefully you've got it. Looks like this on the front. Let me tell you why we're here, and what we're doing, and what action we need from you tonight. The goals and objectives, as you guys know, are kind of the lead-in to our comprehensive plan, or chapter one, as we know it. It appears when our comprehensive plan was recently done, the date on the front says March 1, 2017, and as you all know, it's a fairly new comprehensive plan. And I think there's a general perception that every five years, you have to do a new comprehensive plan. But the state law under Planning and Zoning, Caris 100, does not say every five years, you have to do a new comprehensive plan. It says every five years, you're supposed to look at your plan again, re-adopt it, reaffirm it, see if it's still relevant, and you can move on. You can actually keep the same comprehensive plan for lots of years if you think it's still relevant. But once every five years, you're supposed to look at it. It appears when our comprehensive plan was drafted, the goals and objectives were brought to the commission level and the fiscal court level in 2012. So that puts them at the six-year mark here coming up this year. So they're time for another look. So the planning commission did look at the goals and objectives, and they could have concurred. They're still valid. They look good. Let's move on for another five years. However, we took an opportunity to do some minor housekeeping to those. That's chapter one, and that's what you have in front of you. So when we touch goals and objectives in the comprehensive plan, the governments have to ratify those. All the other chapters of the comprehensive plan, 2 through 10, do not take any action by the parent governments. The planning commission has the authority to amend those documents. The goals and objectives need you guys to sort of rubber stamp those if you see fit after we amended them. What we did is very minor, but it was kind of a big thing. It was pointed out several times that chapter one of our comprehensive plan, being the goals and objectives, lacks some verbiage in there that was pretty important. We supposedly follow a future land use map in our community. It's referenced in chapter nine, all through chapter nine, further back in the document. We're going to show you in the zone change here in a minute how we use the comprehensive plan, how we use the future land use map. But it was ironic that there was no discussion or mention of a future land use map in chapter one, which is front and center of the plan. It talked about how we utilize the plan, how we make decisions, but didn't say we follow the future land use map. So one of those amendments, you see pretty easy there on the general, and when you look at those goals and objectives, you see that we just added a second sentence to the first sentence, to the first goal, that says we're going to basically have a future land use map, and the first objective says we're going to follow the future land use map. The rest of the goals and objectives, as you see, we didn't make hardly any changes, if none. They read well. They were still relevant. When you look at environmental, historic preservation, housing, community facilities, transportation, et cetera, but when we got to land use, something that's near and dear to planners' hearts, we decided to take a little bit of liberty there, and we took that section and broke it into two goals. So again, we referenced the future land use map, and then we made what I described at the public hearing as kind of a fluffy goal, too. It's kind of a to-do list. It's kind of a, hey, where do we want our community to be? What could we do? What documents could be amended to sort of achieve a higher development quality and level in our community? And that's what goal two is saying, to encourage compact, sustainable, high-quality development, which protects the community, and on and on and on. And how do we do that? You see a whole bunch of things that really are to-do lists that need to go into a revised zoning ordinance, dealing with open space, roadway connectivity, greenways, walking trails, streams, corridors, tree protection, walkability, on and on and on. So the planning commission worked on this for a while. This is new to that last part of the goals and objectives. We met with the Smart Growth folks, Bull County Smart Growth Group. They helped us wordsmith some of this goal, too. And the planning commission had a hearing last week and passed it 6 to 0 to bring this recommendation to you guys for consideration. I'd be glad to answer any questions about the goals and objectives and what they do or don't do. Again, it's the lead-off chapter here, chapter one, and it requires your all's amendment, or your approval. It's not an ordinance, I believe. It's just an approval, and that puts those goals and objectives forward for another five years at least, unless we want to look at them sooner.
Steve, does this mean Junction City is officially back to participating?
Junction City's not officially back, although they have recently voted at one of their council meetings to start the interrogation process to come back. The reason we put Junction City in there, it's interesting, Junction City's referenced through the whole plan already. The 2017 plan was somewhat of a redo of the 2007 plan, so Junction City's referenced in chapters 2, 3, 4, 5, all the way through the document, even chapter nine. We thought it was odd they weren't in chapter one, so we put them back in in chapter one. It just referenced them. They're a city in our community for these goals. I think it makes sense whether they're in or out down the road. I still think they're a community in our town that we'd want to achieve these objectives in those, in that area of the county, too. Hopefully that's where we're heading.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve Planning and Zoning Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Goals and Objectives, as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins and Commissioner Cottle. Discussion? I have a question. On page seven, continuing on page eight, is it your intention to expand upon each of those bullet points?
Seven and eight? Yes. Those bullet points that are under that objective, which says, "Establish design standards and incentives for urban and suburban development," to better address those items? That's kind of the stuff we hope to move into the new zoning ordinance rewrite, specific techniques or standards that hopefully address all those issues.
Thank you.
There are also, Mayor, the kind of one through whatever, you know, of Smart Growth 101. And as you know, we're going to be trying to do a seminar here in the fall or next year. I think the Smart Growth Group thought it was important we get these general bullet points in this document as, again, just a starting point for a discussion. Again, this is just the goal and objective section, but that's kind of our desires, to try to achieve some type of verbiage in our book on all of those issues. Two of those would actually go into subdivision regulations if we amended it, like on street Just a wish list.
So on, working with the Smart Growth people, were you able to address some of their concerns and maybe alleviate some of their concerns, or find some compromise anyway?
I'm not sure. We've been on other sides. At this point, we've been talking the whole time, since I've been employed here, just so I could get familiar with what their objectives they want and letting them know what our documents are about. I think we're pretty much on the same page when it comes to Smart Growth, the topics, what it is, what it can be, how we implement it. I think we might come to an impasse on some of those issues, but right now, I think they're satisfied with the way we're using the future land use map. They're definitely satisfied with these amendments, came to the meeting to support those. I think their main priorities, farmland, you know, preservation and protection, and it goes right along with these topics. So I think we're, I think we're kind of saying the same thing at this point.
Any further questions?
I'll play off yours a little bit. Mayor, I think it's good this whole new section you put in does address some things that all of us as citizens want to see, and certainly you folks out there don't see this document, so I wanted to bring it up in terms of things like stream corridor floodplain protection, greenway and walking trail connectivity, tree protection. So we're looking at some things that are certainly quality of life issues in this addition.
And also the preservation.
Pardon me?
And also preservation of historic structures.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you.
That's really important.
Anything else? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 6, Mr. Hunter, continue on with regards to planning and zoning, zone change recommendation on Stanford Road.
Yes, sir. PowerPoints up here, and I'm going to play off this a little bit. Walk you through the zone change request. This is the meeting, I guess, where we give you a summary of what the planning commission did, and we are bringing you a recommendation to approve this zone change, but it's a lot of moving pieces to this. It's a fairly big project we've been working on for quite a while with the applicant, and Earl has participated in this, too. The property owner, you see, and this is the actual staff report that was at the planning commission, just page one, and then I'm going to play off the maps after that. Michael McAfee was the applicant, as you guys know, at Zero Stanford Road. Says it's 55.62 acres, but what we're actually zoning is just a portion of that, or 44.844 acres. It's already got highway commercial zoning across the frontage of the property. So let's move this thing forward. There's the, there's the shape of the property, if you guys aren't familiar with it, across from Pioneer Playhouse. It wraps around the property there. It goes down the hill, but it touches Stanford Road in two spots. There's an arrow of the property again, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. There's the actual zoning layer as it is today, and this is the property over here, and you can see it has highway commercial along the frontage, even down on this end. Then it has agriculture, and it has what used to be industrial zoning that was converted to IBD, or Industrial Business, or our Industrial Business Development District. So it's split zone with multiple zones, as well as a floodplain that you see on the back of the property, which is a zoning overlay at the same time. So this is a good indication of our parcel map, our zoning map, and what we've got are multiple zoning layers on one piece of property. So Mr. McAfee came to us several months ago and said, hey, I'm looking at zoning my property. I've got some development ideas. I'd like to zone it to something. What do I need to do? First thing we told him was the future land use map that we just talked about, which guides decisions that the planning commission reviews, is really the basis on how we look at zone changes. Is it in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and does it comply or conform with the future land use map? So the future land use map at that time showed it all as multifamily. This gold color is all apartments, so even though it's a big agricultural field to all of us as we drive by, the future land use is we could put apartments there. Mr. McAfee has had a desire to do mixed-use development, where he could do retail apartments or some combination. So the first step, which was a recent change, is he had to formally amend the future land use map. So he did that this past summer, and you can see he amended the future land use map. This is off our online map and shows the categories, but he amended it to a new category we added, which is called mixed-use residential. So mixed-use residential lets you do multifamily, apartments, office, retail, or any combination thereof in kind of a complimentary fashion. So he did go through the first step and amend the future land use map to mixed-use residential, which was kind of the precursor to file the zone change request. So then he filed the zone change request, and we had the hearing, and again, it's, this is the concept plan, and I want to point this out before I show you this. This is the master plan. But historically here, I think when we see zone changes at the planning commission, this is typically what we would get. I wouldn't call this a concept plan when you're down to parking spaces and road alignments and building rooftops. This is a site development plan, in my opinion. And what we don't want to do is lock developers down to that level of detail. We want to allow some wiggle room so this thing can evolve and change as the market maybe changes. So what we kind of coached Mr. McAfee and his engineering firm was, let's try a different kind of concept plan that I think is, will be successful on down into the future. And what we did is sort of define clearly where he could do commercial, and this area in this lighter green would be the mixed-use, where he could do commercial or apartments. And this will be a, I'll describe this in a minute, this is kind of an area where his business would go with a different building standard. This is floodplain, et cetera. And then what we did on this concept plan is lock down that we're building the road if we can figure out a connection in the rear, and if we can get guidance from the state on the front. There's a note up here that says the state's going to have to help us figure out this location of this access, as well as, so it could shift anywhere in here. He also made several commitments here that I'm going to walk you through kind of real quick on what he committed to. Those get recorded with this document if it passes here. It would be recorded in the courthouse. Those would be his hard conditions. This would be his concept plan as far as the footprint where we could do different uses. And then the other things you see here, he committed to a 25-foot landscape buffer along the apartments and a potential walking trail or path across the front of the property, a dedicated 25-foot greenways or shared youth pass, path easement. He also did a typical... He also did a typical road section here where we're gonna possibly build trails through the development, and then I'll go through these conditions. This is the master plan. The master plan is presented to the Planning Commission, but it will not be recorded. It is just a work in progress. This is draft three, actually, and there could be more drafts as we move forward. But what you see here is several building rooftops that coincide with that commercial footprint, and this is saying we might do some kind of retail. Maybe someone buys one lot or splits this lot. So again, this, this could change. Then there's kind of a transition of, it could be retail or office. Then clearly, you can identify these as building rooftops, assisted living, town homes, or any combination thereof. Shows all conceptual parking, shows where Mr. McAfee would move his landscape business down to the back of the property and use the floodplain as an advantage for plantings, greenhouses or whatnot. Greenhouses would be out of the floodplain, but he could do plants. And then it shows us our trail that exists on the property and a conceptual road alignment, because again, at this point, the city has property in this location, but to get across here, we'd have to get across KSD, and there's, so this road might have to shift this way, who knows, north, south, whatever. So going back to the zoning map, you can kind of get a, you can kind of see why this came about. We have J.E. Woods already developed. The pavement stops at a point, but we have right-of-way that goes all the way back. So there's an opportunity to make a street connection from J.E. Woods through this development. Now, why this came up, and again, it's conceptual, was what we don't want to see is a development of this caliber, of this intensity, with just one way in, one way out. You know, if this ultimately was a cul-de-sac, you're gonna have a lot of building rooftop, a lot of units on the ground, and for different fire protection, safety reasons, you don't want to ever see one entrance into a development this intense. The more connectivity we can have between other ways to get in and out of the property, as well as connectivity for neighbors, you know, if this develops as retail, the idea that folks on J.E. Woods could get to this same services, we don't have to get in our car and drive all the way around to come in here and maybe shop or eat at one of these places. These folks in the apartments could get to a park that's right next door, as well as interconnecting all these walking trails and travel ways. The goal is to get this more pedestrian-oriented, again, places to maybe eat or shop. And this is an ambitious plan, by the way, to think all this is gonna happen overnight or in a few years. It's a long-range plan with a new street network, conceptual. All this could change, but I think the idea was this is master plan one, as we work with City Public Works, we work with the developer. He could start from this end, he could start from this end, he could start from both ends, technically. But he will have to bond this road. This is a new city street with cul-de-sacs that would have to be bonded. There'd be oversight, we'd hold money till he builds it to the standard and y'all accept it. So the idea is to, again, take advantage of an existing street network, get us a new connector from Second all the way to Stanford, and get all these kind of uses that can kind of share traffic and things as we move through the community. This concept plan does, and we've got a little bit of wiggle room in the subregs that says we can do sidewalks or we can do trails, but Mr. McAfee is showing us here that we'd do an eight-foot wide multi-use path on one side with no sidewalks, or we're gonna do sidewalks on both sides. But what his goal here is this shows sidewalks on both sides on all streets, but what we really want to do is figure out a way to make this path and connect this whole development with another path, and then, of course, he's dedicating a 25-foot greenway strip on his property that could be even another travel way or sidewalk or shared use path, which gets us then, the path is here, so if we can figure out how to make a connection across here, and this way, we could have actually a pedestrian connection all the way down from Stanford Road from here as we get downtown. So there's a lot of moving pieces to that, and before we go much further, I want to talk about the actual hard commitments they made and tell you what are the seven conditions of the development. As you guys know, when the zone change comes in, they have to turn in a concept plan, it's required, and I just showed you what the concept plan is, and I'm just gonna, this was, this was on this document right here, getting hard to read, but it's locked in so we can record it. But here's kind of a summary that I blew up for you guys and just put red on some things. Number one, he's agreeing to how much building we can put on the property. Says 600,000 square feet. That sounds like a lot, but when you add up all those rooftops and all those apartments, that's a, that's a number that gives them a little wiggle room. It's probably not achievable, but it's, it's close to what you see on that plan. Building heights are locked in here for commercial and non-commercial. Condition two, deals with signage, this was pretty impressive. With all those commercial lots along the road, as you guys know, you can have 30-foot-high signs, 100-square foot. He committed to that 20, the signs wouldn't be taller than 20 feet with 100 square feet of face, and then all the signs in that second tier would only be 10-foot tall with 80-square foot. Again, that's to make it a higher-quality development, less sign clutter, tall signs. We got tall signs out there, but the goal is to get these more uniform and more consistent on that road. The next one, number three, deals with that 25-foot landscape buffer, that again, is on this side of the property. So he's agreed to a 25-foot landscape buffer along the apartments. Our zoning ordinance only requires that to be 10. We sort of pushed that a little bit, as well as a higher quality set, our zoning ordinance says how we landscape. This says there'll be 10 evergreens, five deciduous, and 20 shrubs per 100 linear feet. That's more intense than the zoning ordinance requires right now. Mr. McAfee added to that, that the plant species and spacing will be established with the first project and then be consistent. So again, if someone comes in here with Project A, let's say it's a Walgreens or something or a restaurant, they'll have to landscape these areas. Well, then that landscape plant species will go down this whole side, but it'll have to be that style, at least with deciduous and shrubs per 100 feet. It'll be that standard all the way along the apartments right here. These will all be landscaped, all these parking lots will be landscaped to our ordinance. This one will be a little more intense along those existing apartments. The exterior of buildings, this is a big deal. I'm not sure I've seen a zone change we have in the community that has this kind of standard. And I'll just say, the staff took a little bit of liberty here to work with him on this. If his goal was to have a high-quality development, well, the one way you do that is to commit to high-quality materials. So what Mr. McAfee, and he wrote this himself with a little guidance from us on how the topic could evolve, and he's saying the exterior of all buildings, and it says, except on lots adjacent, shall be at least 50% stone, masonry, or drive-in. Drive-in's another name for ephes. Masonry would be hardy board or something of that nature. So we're not gonna do vinyl and metal buildings and pole barns, but that's 50%. The exterior of buildings adjacent to Stanford Road, so again, that's 75, and then the ones that actually front Stanford Road have to be 100% brick, stone, masonry, or drive-in material. So what we're gonna see as we drive down Stanford Road are high-quality buildings, lower signs. The other three sides of those buildings could be 75%. Most folks that come in and build a restaurant or something will be consistent on all sides, probably, so it's more than likely we'll get 100% of those materials on all sides. And then that next tier of buildings back can drop down a caliber all the way back to the back. This gets back to the concept plan, though, in the very back, and this was a late-file Mr. McAfee's area. This red area is actually where we're not gonna have any restriction for building materials. So we'll have the higher quality here, the drop-down quality here, and then back here, we won't have a standard that's backed by the floodplain, because as he indicated at the public hearing, he's gonna need to build some greenhouses and some other, the idea is get his business off Second and move it back here, so he's not gonna be able to achieve those same standards, being in the landscape business, storing mulch and those kind of things. And we'll finish up here. I know it's taken a while, but wanted to walk you through all this. Number five, just says we're connecting the sewer, it's a given, but we wanted to lock that down. Number six, very complicated, talks about traffic studies, Stanford Road, road widens and on and on and on. What we agreed to was that all future street and driveway entrances have to be approved by KYTC, it's their road. In conjunction, we agree that this could be a traffic study, intersection analysis, or highway improvements, and the applicant agrees that each site development plan is gonna have a trip generation analysis done at every level until we hit 1,000 trips, then at that point, a traffic study has to come into us. In the meantime, the state could tell them tomorrow they want a three-lane road, they want a turn lane, they want more right-of-way. All of those things are gonna be tied in with their encroachment permit to put that access in. But as of today, we don't have firm commitment from the state back on whether they want the entrance here or right here across from Pioneer Playhouse. If you drive out there, you see two kind of gravel cuts into the property. I think they'd like to have the entrance here, and that makes sense, that's the best site distance, but the state could say, "Shift it here, shift it here." This whole road alignment might have to shift. At the same time, we're gonna need a traffic study to dictate, as you move into these apartments, there's a 180-foot D cell lane in here. They may have to build a D cell lane, they may have to build a left-hand turn into this property and widen it to three lanes. This is an intense development with, again, 600,000 square foot of building rooftop. It's a good chance you're gonna improve Stanford Road. That's gonna come with developing this property at this intensity. So what that commitment says is that they're gonna do this analysis, we're gonna work with the state, and we're gonna get trip generation reports with every site plan that comes into us, one by one, and as soon as we hit that 1,000-trip average, then they're gonna have to turn in a traffic study before we can go on to Project Three or Four, for example. And that comes to the Planning Commission. So if the state doesn't ask for a traffic study, ultimately, the Planning Commission's getting a traffic study. And then number seven was that 25-foot greenways easement that we're gonna put up along Stanford Road. I believe that's everything. That's just their technical document, and again, I'll be glad to answer any questions. The Planning Commission did vote six to zero, had a pretty long hearing, went through all these elements with them, there were lots of questions, and again, they, six to zero to forward you guys a recommendation for approval on this zone change request. And again, the zoning we're going to is NCRC, which is Neighborhood Residential and Commercial, which again, allows flexible uses, whether you do commercial, multifamily, or apartments, or townhomes, or...
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion to accept the zone change recommendation?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cottle. Is it a second?
Second.
Mr. Atkins, thank you. Discussion.
I have some questions. There are only six conditions listed on this packet, yeah.
Yeah, the staff report went out a week before, we were still negotiating, so we got number seven right before the meeting.
Okay.
And that, that, actually, you've got the current concept plan. The concept plan was actually laid out on the table that day, too, because we kept changing. Staff report went out a week prior, and we only had six conditions, number seven's on that list. It's on the concept plan, it just wasn't written out on the greenways on Stanford Road.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was in the record correctly.
Those are the official ones on that.
So if you connect this road to the J.E. Woods Drive, do you have to cross water for that? Like, is there gonna be a structure or some sort of bridge required for that, or is it all across land?
Well, I just threw there or up there, real quick, and Earl's free to jump in here. We've been talking with them a little bit, but it's really been preliminary. He is an engineer, it's kind of his project. What I think he's attempting to do is get to the property line and this general location, and then again, we have pavement to a certain point, and we have city property. Whether we move through here or through here, the concept plan that we looked at would get us right through here. This is someone else's property, we'd have to have to figure out how we'd get through that. Again, that'd be on the developer to figure out how we get to the city's property, but the goal is through a partnership, if the developer could get to here, Earl and I have talked to him, there might be an opportunity for the city to figure out a way we can make these connect, make, take the developer doing all this. We haven't worked all that out at this point, but what we don't want to see is just to end up dead-end to a cul-de-sac, we have an opportunity to connect the city street that sort of stops, and again, we got park access, and we could have interconnectivity between two major roadways, and again, folks could ride or bike or walk to retail, shop. Folks that live here could visit other friends. I mean, the goal is to try to interconnect when we can, if we can.
Commissioner Terry, if you look behind the football field, the stadium, there's a creek. If you follow that directly south, that line there that he has the red dot on, if you continue that, it goes, crosses Terrill Drive and goes to the lagoon, goes to Clark's Run proper already. There's a culvert underneath Terrill Drive right in there. It won't require an additional major culvert, it would maybe some minor tile or not necessarily a major structure, no.
Okay.
In other words, you already have one, you already have one to the west of where he would tie in, in other words, right in there, correct?
So it's not an actual bridge, it's just more of a...
Correct.
I think this is probably a chicken or egg question. Is he gonna build the road first and then develop, or is he gonna build the road as he develops?
That's a good question. We've, with the subregs revision, we now require 100% bonding. So, you know, if you wanted to plat these lots to this point, for example, cut this lot, cut these, he'd have to at least bond and plat this much road, and we'd have to hold that money until it was constructed. He could bond the whole thing, he could come from one side, but he can't subdivide this property till he bonds the road or builds the road. He hasn't indicated what his plan is at this point, which end he's gonna start at. I think his goal is to market these commercial lots on the front, and he could do that today. Big Sign could go out saying, "Zone commercial property, prime location." But if he wants to sell this lot to someone to plat it, we're gonna have to build a street because we're not providing any access along Stanford Road. I guess if he wants to get these two lots, he's gonna have to bond all of this street initially, because these two lots front off the cul-de-sac. Some developers would build it all up front or initially start it. Some developers, well, I think would come from both ends. If I was gonna do these apartments or townhomes, you could come, you could work on this end of the project first, you could come from both ends. But again, that's up to him and his engineer, and he hadn't really sat down with Earl and I and discussed any of that, other than he wants to build a street to connect to existing city street.
So the only, the only main thing that concerns me, and I was at this, this meeting where this hearing was held, is the landscape business will have to go through at least one neighborhood to get in or out, if, if it's connected, whether it's connected, and if that is all developed, then he's, landscaping is a very messy business, and it's pretty messy over here on Second Street already, so that concerns me.
Well, it's, it's a valid concern. We're putting a business back there along the floodplain that maybe is not the most desirable. He'll tell you, pretty desirable business, and he thinks it operates fairly well, but I understand what you're saying, you got equipment. Mostly, it would be wheeled vehicles, though, trucks and trailers. There's no big equipment that really, 18-wheelers, but he does have equipment be coming and going. I imagine down the road, I don't think we have a prohibition against that kind of stuff moving through city streets, but if I'm the developer, I would be mindful of that movement if I was especially building the street initially, till I got it to the city, and then I guess I'd drive all over it. But, you know, I mean, that's kind of his idea, was to get off Second, take advantage of the floodplain, land him a spot that's kind of out of sight, and I think be able to stage and go off in two different directions, depending where those job sites are that he's heading to, so. And Earl, you may add on that, I'm not sure.
No, he will, he will have some truck traffic. It will be delivering mulch, for example. He takes bulk delivery with products such as that, but it's not necessarily unlike traffic that we have, the city has on Terrill Drive now. So in the position that that property is in, I don't, other than the traffic count, it wouldn't necessarily be altering the characteristics of the traffic.
Earl, if this becomes a city street, and I'm just expanding on that, we have a through street all the way through, we could designate that potentially no heavy trucks, or could we do anything? It's gonna function like a collector, though, so I'm not sure how we would prohibit certain kind of trucks.
Well, it is gonna change the traffic and the traffic pattern on the Second Street side and through J.E. Woods.
It will, that is correct. I do agree with that. I, you know, it's probably premature to speculate on how to characterize it and restrict it, or, you know, I probably would be hesitant to comment too much on that, but, but other than identifying, if he did have a business back there, we would know that ultimately the traffic count on Terrill Drive, J.E. Woods, would increase. Right? We know that.
Let me take you back on her question. If this was fully developed, as it is proposed here, how many individual living spaces or living units would be on this planned project?
He didn't actually define that, but it's approximately 300 or so that you see, but again, it's because of the mixed-use opportunity, you're seeing about 300,000 square foot and about 300 units, but if by chance the market was, "Hey, I could do more apartments," he could do more, it could end up being all apartments, or potentially, it could be all retail, but it can't go over that 600,000 cap. So at this point, conceptually, you're seeing about 300 units there, but he hasn't defined if those are two- or three-bedroom units, which really is a major change in traffic units, which really is a major change in traffic when you're going from two to three bedrooms, or some end up being four. If that ends up being assisted living facility, be a lower traffic generator than if it was three-bedroom apartments or whatnot. So again, that's just master plan draft three at this point. But you're correct. If that maxes out, it's going to generate a lot of traffic. That's why we're going to need a traffic study, is to figure out what it's going to generate and what it'll impact.
Are there freestanding, freestanding houses? Is that what you mean, James? Are there any freestanding houses?
No single-family development proposed. No.
Okay, no single-family.
No. And that was what the original future land use map was, was all multifamily. He's gone to mixed. He could do some if he chose. NCRC doesn't prohibit that, but the goal is to put apartments, office, and retail, or some combination thereof.
I'm just concerned about the effect onto Second Street and the J. Woods area. Because if we have 300 apartments...
Potentially.
The average trip per family per day is 10.
Nine and a half, well, yeah, nine and a half units would be what a typical three-bedroom apartment would generate, nine and a half trips per day.
That's 3,000 trips.
Again, he's only allowed to go so far before we get this traffic study, which might make him do improvements on both ends of this development, not if out on Second.
But the Second Street, there's not a traffic study required?
No.
Because it's not state.
He, this traffic study will be scoped when we finally get to the point of the traffic study. Because we're making that road connection all the way to Second, we can scope that study and make him study Second. This intersection, Stanford Road, on down at David, the scope of this study could be a lot bigger than just that access point on Stanford Road. Because he's making that connection all the way. Potentially, he's impacting all those streets. And it really would be up to you guys, Earl, to set the scope with the state.
Yeah, correct. And what he has said is exactly what I would say. You're going to tailor your traffic study to include the intersections on either end, including Second Street. You're going to look at trip generation there, both directions. There may be improvements to J. Woods Drive that will be required. He may have to do some of those, absolutely. But, but your study's going to, going to control that. It will be a traffic increase. I would say that traffic is increasing throughout town. You're not necessarily going to, you know, restrict that. You know, you have to anticipate it and install triggers to help you manage that as it does increase over the course of time. And I think what Planning and Zoning has done here in this case is tried to, through the, through the traffic study concept, require to, to control that and manage it as, as that increases. And other than that route, I'm not really sure what all you can do, other than then think about which is what you're contemplating. Is this too dense? You can ask those questions and start to look at it in that way.
And one major change...
If I may interject for one second, Steve, thank you. I just want to announce we're officially in the weeds.
Yep.
We, we're here on a zone change. And I mean, your questions are okay. I mean, if we want to continue that line. But ultimately speaking, we're here to determine one simple question, rather. And that's, it was something that was zone agricultural and industrial business development. Is it appropriate for it to be, have a mixed-use residential class of NCRC and neighborhood residential, neighborhood center residential and commercial? So ultimately, your decision is not traffic studies, is not how many bedrooms or certain proposed apartments, but rather, is it an appropriate site for that classification? So I would prefer if your questions were based on that, simply because these types of things, when they do get in the weeds, they tend to lead to decisions that may or may not be based upon the applicable question in front of you, which is, is NCRC an appropriate classification of the acreage, period?
Gets back to the conference of plan discussion we just had. The planning commission looks at the conference of plan two ways. Is it in compliance with the goals and objectives? And is it in compliance with the future land use map in chapter nine of the conference of plan? And they found that both of those items had been met, and that was the basis of the recommendation. It is conditioned on the concept plan and the, and the conditions submitted. They have a little wiggle room there because chapter nine says they have to turn something in and commit to some things. But it is in compliance with the future land use map, which is the, is the biggest item or the main item that we look at when we have to see a zoning proposal like Mr. Dexter just mentioned.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Hunter?
I've got one. I know you probably answered this earlier, but it's going to NCRC, right?
Yes, NCRC.
And that's mixed, a mixed-use zone. But you defined for those who are going to be watching this and those who are sitting in the audience, what are the, what are the, all of the appropriate or legal uses in a mixed zone like this?
Well, I didn't bring my zoning ordinance, but I know them a little bit off the top of my head here because we've been talking about them a bunch. You pretty much can do about any kind of retail that you can imagine. You can do buildings up to 30,000 square foot. You could do banks. You could do hotels. You can do any kind of offices, medical. Interestingly enough, you can't do gas stations. Gas stations require an additional approval. You can do multifamily with no real cap on the units, multifamily duplexes, pretty much any kind of retail until you get to, again, some of the, I guess, the only retail that's really legislated out is gas stations, service stations, things of that nature.
Well, I appreciate you keeping us on track, Mr. Dexter. And I know I'm probably way overthinking it, as I tend to do, but this does have a ripple effect. Anything you do has a ripple effect. And I don't want to be five years down the road with a serious situation that has developed as a ripple effect. And, and while, yes, this is probably an appropriate zoning for that property, I think we need to consider future and future developments and the ripple effect that it has. And I just want to make sure that we contain that.
We will get site plans. Again, going back to that master plan, we will get site plan applications as required by our zoning ordinance, project by project by project. We'll be looking at traffic study with that probably second or third, we, thousand trips, you know, is all that we can do. That could come with just a couple apartment developments. So we will see those one by one. It'll give us an opportunity to look at the entire project, have additional commitments on each site, and look at the scale and size and phasing of this as we see those site plan developments. Those will all require planning commission approval.
Any further questions?
That's why I go to those first.
Well, I think it needs to be pointed out that if and when this is approved, this is the last time we'll see this unless it come back from the zone change. So I think that's why it's important for us to ask some of those, these questions.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, chair has called question for vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post like sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Hunter.
Thank you.
Just as a point of information, I'll appear in ordinance reflecting your vote tonight of affirmation. And it'll have two readings starting at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Item seven is the code enforcement report. Ms. Lester?
Good, excuse me. Good evening. I wanted to introduce, before I started to report, our new parking enforcement officer. This is Nicholas Bowden. And Nicholas Bowden, we call him Nick. Nick has been with our Public Works Department for the last five years. So we are happy to have him in parking enforcement. And he's been with us a couple weeks, and he's doing a great job. And just wanted you to put a face and a name together since you approved that, I think it was at the very last commission meeting. And so...
This is at the parking garage, right?
He's at the parking garage, and he'll be out on the street when, you know, he needs to as well. But we'll still be using Roger Hartner, doing a lot of the parking enforcement, writing the citations. But he's already gotten his feet wet and written several already, so.
No.
Thank you, Nick.
Nice to meet you.
As you can see from your report, we've had several things going on for the month of October. We issued 52 notice of violations. And our inspections have gone way up. We started a new program. Our grass and weed season just ended. We had 37 grass and weeds complaints, but that's into the end of October. So with the weather the way it is, we don't have actual complaints and things like that. We're doing proactive enforcement, meaning instead of just driving by a neighborhood, we're taking streets and we're physically stopping, get out, and you look at the property, see if there's anything that you notice, take pictures, document that in our software. And we have that baseline already. So we've started doing that. So that's why, we did 138 of those in the month of October. So that's where our inspections have gone way up. We had 159 parking citations issued, and we issued 18 business licenses. We've been utilizing our code enforcement fines. We have pending fines of $400 and a couple others out there. And so we've been utilizing those, and that's been very effective. 88 Duncan Hill was released from the condemnation list. So that's one less that's on there. And I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I made is the city manager report. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Tonight, I'll be brief, but I wanted to remind the city commission and the public that we have scheduled a special call meeting for tomorrow at 5:30, tomorrow being November the 14th. And the purpose of that special call meeting is to have a staff report presented with regard to how other communities in Kentucky and throughout the nation are processing and approving murals in their historic or cultural district, as well as freestanding art. And so we have looked into that a bit. And I think our meeting will be informative to the public and to the commission. This is a beginning point. We don't have any firm conclusions or recommendations at this point. And I know that you also wanted to hear from the public, if they have ideas initially, to, to suggest. So there'd be an opportunity for that tomorrow as well. And that won't be the only opportunity that we, as a community, will have, an opportunity to consider how we might best consider the applications for art in our historic districts, and to incorporate those in a manner that are beneficial to our population and to the historic district as well. So I think that would be a good discussion tomorrow. So we're looking forward to that. The other thing that I will mention is that I've had a discussion with mayor, maybe a few of you, about our challenges and our opportunities in the year ahead as we begin a new city commission term. And it was thought that we could best begin in a productive way if we had a staff and city commission retreat, as we've held in prior years. And I've corresponded with several of you over a few days. And it seems like December the 12th is the date that seemingly works for everyone. So I'll mention that unless I hear otherwise, we'll plan to do that on December the 12th. And it will be in town at a location to be determined. It is a public meeting, of course. And we'll be beginning that meeting at 8:30 in the morning, probably with a little coffee and introductions, and then get into the discussion in full earnest shortly after that. It should take, in my opinion, at this point, through early afternoon, through probably a working lunch, or, you know, we'll probably complete one or two, something like that. So again, I think this is an opportunity to be proactive and to look ahead and, and to sort of develop our preliminary plans ahead of being sworn in as the next commission, as all of you are going to be the same set of commissioners again next year. And that's really mayor and commission. The only two things I want to mention tonight, I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts about that retreat or beginning the, the year ahead, but we're just trying to point in that, that beginning.
Is everybody good on the 12th?
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Scott?
No, sir. That's all.
All right, sir. All right. We are in that section called Hear the Public. As I promised, this is the public's opportunity to take three minutes of the podium about any subject that has not been discussed already on tonight's agenda. Anything else that's on your mind? It's quite a group. Seeing, seeing no one is willing to participate, we'll move right on and commit up.
Wait, wait. I'm sorry. The time has passed.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, y'all are up quick. I'd like to know, and probably a lot of people here could tell me this, are there prohibitions against four-wheelers in city parks?
I'm not immediately aware of a prohibition.
My recollection, my recollection is that there's a prohibition of motorized vehicles on trails and things of that nature. You can't ride a four-wheeler on a public street. So I was going to say, it could be lawful to be in a parking lot, but I don't know how you'd get there because it'd be unlawful for you to, to ride it on a public roadway. But I don't, I don't, I think there are a list of rules in parks, and one of which does prohibit use of motorized vehicles.
So, Ms. Hamler, you're not asking just for the benefit of...
No, I'm asking because we have an issue.
Please explain.
At Batewood slash Michael Smith Park. I can't get used to Michael Smith, but I will. I'm old, that's why. Yes, we have four-wheelers coming in there. I don't know how they get there. I don't know if they're brought in on a trailer. I don't know if they ride them there. I'm assuming they bring them in. And they are cutting that park all the hell back in the back. Once you get past halfway back, back to where the old landfill stops and starts and stops. And it's pretty bad. And it's, it didn't happen just once. It's been ongoing.
So let me, let me take this another way. Seeing how that is kind of vacant ground and seeing how they've already discovered it, we're not using it for much. Can we not designate it for their use?
The trail is back there. And then there's educational signage that's going to be added.
Right. It really isn't vacant. It's right, it's inside, it's on the Second Street side of where the basketball goals are. So, I mean, they're riding all back in there. And back in the summer, when we were working there and cleaning the place up, it was...
So it's not as far as the, where the landfill used to be?
No, but it goes from that place, that, from there back toward...
Second Street. Okay. I thought you were talking further back.
Some of the front part, well.
Okay. Well, with that said, is there, is there land back there that we could designate for that purpose?
I'm not one, I don't know that. I guess, Earl, if somebody could explain that, but...
But if it's a...
No decision, no decision tonight, but look, let's look at it.
No, there's a, Donna found it quicker than I did.
There is a prohibition against any motorized vehicle in a city park.
Fantastic.
So...
Could we put up some signs?
That's, that's exactly what we were talking with the police here. That, that's what we probably should do to aid their enforcement and, and enable them to more quickly, you know, direct those...
Okay, I'm, I'm going to be devil's advocate here. So how's that a city park back in there? It may be city property.
It is, it is land and water grant funded from the lagoon all the way to Second Street, and some portions of it are all of it. So all of that theoretically is a park, park space, green space. Where this, where there are tracks is clearly inside of what you would consider the park.
Aside from the question of whether it's a park or not, the liability is terrible.
I knew that was coming up.
So, I mean, regardless of its distinction or qualification, I mean, to have someone on your property, what you know about it, and don't take any reasonable steps to prohibit perhaps legal activity that, and I say illegal, it's against city code, to be there, then you become somewhat complicit in the activity and the vent of insurance claims and things of that nature.
But chances are they're on the trail, which is also prohibited with, with motorized.
Yeah. And bigger than that, that's, that's a violation of our grant covenants. So you're, you're putting now what's considerable sums of money in jeopardy if they are, in fact, on the trail.
I appreciate you bringing that up because that's not the only park. Jackson Park also has violators. So, and, and talk of Chief Gray, you have to be caught. So that's the difficulty. They don't have the staff just to sit out there and watch it. So I think signage is a good way to start. I think that's a...
Well, and that was, that was the direction of my question. Catching them and using our law enforcement, I'm not sure that's a good use of our resources. But to your point, it's correct. So that said, is there any way we can, and can, I don't want to use the word accommodate, but is there any way we can manage this situation so that those folks have a place to go?
Well, I think at first blush, now that the attention has been brought to staff, I think the appropriate course of action is allow staff to deliberate the issue, come forth with the proposal if necessary, or handle it administratively, and frankly, bring you an update if necessary or when appropriate.
Well, I can take care of 50% of it for you tonight. Kevin and I just got to find another place to have some fun. Kevin and I just gotta find another place to have some fun.
I would say.
Somebody with an answer.
I would say where this is all taking place, it could, I, I can't see how it can't be disrupted to the residents. If it's after dark and after bedtime and dinnertime, they're hearing it, for sure they're hearing it. So I think there could be some spies.
Yeah.
And I guess Jennifer has something about this, too.
I was just gonna say, the best way to have that land respected is to increase activity on the trail and have people back there, because trails police themselves. And when there's people using those resources, you see the disrespective property decrease and property value actually increases. So we're hard at work at building a trailhead right there at McClure Village, so the city commission supporting our trail efforts will also help a lot of your issues with that just in a very natural way. Sorry, couldn't miss that chance.
Ms. Calhoun may be able to solve the problem for you.
Well, I'm thinking, well.
How do you know she's not the one riding the four-wheelers? Have you got a visual on that?
I'm surprised she's not already out there stopping them.
Well, I appreciate you bringing that up, and I think you're right, Mayor Paris, that maybe down the road, staff and Parks and Rec can look at something like that. This is an issue similar to Skateboard Park. And it, prior to that, what'll be you do with the skateboard folks? Because they're just riding the rails of churches and so forth, so we provide them a place to play. And we're in the process of building a mountain bike park, so they have a place to play. So I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a bad idea at all that you came up with, but until that happens, I think we have to work with signage.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, we'll move right on into commissioner comments. Ladies first. Then we go by seniority, Mr. Atkins.
I am committed to the eighth of December at seven o'clock. Thanks to Commissioner Terry. And then I want to get, I'm really looking like that.
What's going on eighth of December at seven o'clock?
The parade.
Oh, the parade.
Thank you, ladies, all right. Somebody knew, all right. I said thanks to Mr. Kevin.
It'd be about like her, she'd get us all to go and she wouldn't tell us.
I want to give a brief update to the city on the M.L. King book read that we just, we're trying to wrap up. We had a hundred and forty-seven books purchased. We had sixty-four for BCTC. We've had eight community discussion sessions, about eighty people participating. And we have our last M.L. King discussion at eleven o'clock, next Tuesday, the twentieth of November, at BCTC. They have two U.S. history classes who've been reading the book, and we're gonna do a book discussion on their campus next Tuesday, so. Been a great project. And thanks to all those folks in the community, oh, he left, didn't he? Who got a book, who read the book, who discussed it, who were group leaders, who did the summary, who wrote the discussion questions, and who hosted and served food at their, it's just really been a great community project, been going on for a couple of months. And that was a very powerful week in October to have all of us sit around and talk about something that was written in nineteen sixty-seven by Dr. King. And then I thought of put this plug out there, too. Home for Christmas with Lonell Harris, Sunday, December the sixteenth, Dambel High School. Been sponsored by the arts community. I know I didn't say that right, but by the arts community. There are tickets being sold, I think they're online, but.
Tickets have been sold?
No, there are being sold.
Are being sold.
I wish I could say they have all been sold, but no.
Can you get tickets at the door, or you have to get them ahead of time?
I think you better contact the Art Commission.
What time did you say, also?
Arts Commission.
Leema Becker.
Leema Becker. I think it's gonna be Sunday at five o'clock, I think, Dambel High School. And the other activities that we're still hoping that Lonell will bring copies of his music and his book to sign and sell, and that he will get a chance to spend some time Monday the seventeenth of December with our Dambel High School students. So it could be a great little, oh, and we will be requesting a proclamation from the city and from the fiscal court declaring the weekend or the day Lonell Harris Day, and trying to approach somebody about putting some signage up in our community about one of our favorite sons. Kevin, that's your project, remember?
Okay. Commissioner Sears?
I'm on it, I'm on it.
My turn?
Yes, sir.
Yes, simply, congratulations to my fellow commissioners and the mayor on your reelection, and happy Thanksgiving to all.
Commissioner Cottle?
I was gonna congratulate everybody as well, both the commission and everybody else who ran and who was victorious. It's, I appreciate people throw their hat in the ring.
I want to thank the fifty or a hundred or so people that it took to put on an amazing Veterans Day yesterday. It started at eleven, and by eleven-ten, there wasn't a seat to be had hardly in the house. It was well executed. They had a special table there for World War II vets. And as you, as you can anticipate, that table's gonna get smaller every year. And, and I would encourage you, next year, come out and just see it. The vibe is really, vibe's really neat, I must say. I mean, all shapes, all sizes, I mean, just, and, and everybody's there because of one thing, you know, they, they serve their country. I enjoyed it. And in tonight's Dambel Papers, a really nice comment from George Coomer with regard to his congratulations to Trilly on her win. And we've all suffered through months of some ugly politics, not here locally, fortunately, but it's always nice to see somebody conduct themselves the way, the way we, we would all hope everybody else would conduct themselves in this. And I look forward, and congratulations to you all, and I look forward to working with Howard Hunt in, in his, his role, as well as the fiscal court. And I think two thousand and nineteen has some real opportunities in it. Any other comments?
We're all on the same team.
Yes, we are.
Well, you just wait till the next vote, though.
Item nine is the payment of the bills. Do I hear a motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented?
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins and Commissioner Cottle, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those like signs, motion carries. Item ten is the update to city project, Mr. Coffey.
Thank you, mayor, commissioners. Our intent was to make ourselves available for some questions, but also to give a very quick update, as we have these listed as, as major projects, but certainly we can talk about others if that's what you want to do. We would mention that the water plant park, we have all the equipment, contractors are lined up. We've got all of our design information from, from the architect, and we have, we are waiting on good weather. We're, we're a little hesitant, honestly, to risk getting started as weeks like this continue, because we, we are, you know, facing the opportunity to have the park disturbed all winter. And, and so we're, we'll be thinking about that over the next few days and probably, you know, pretty close to pulling the plug on that till the spring, honestly.
I believe I'd let it go till the spring.
Yep. And Second Street Bridge, we get, we're getting plans from the contractor this week. We should get those in hand by eleven sixteen, the detailed plans, and we will be looking at those, and then having a follow-up meeting with him. He's in a similar boat also. Several of the projects are in that same, same boat. If they're paddling, they'd all be on different sides paddling in the same direction. But, you know, it, it's in the wintertime for them, too, and so do you really want to get started in the wintertime and have the road subject to weather delays in the winter at this point? We don't, you know, we'll, we'll be weighing those out on, on several of these and, and coming up with a recommendation fairly soon on several of them, this one included. Streetscape, we'll be doing a pre-construction the week of the twenty-sixth, if all goes as planned.
And that's for what area?
The.
Fourth to fifth?
From fifth, yes, from fourth down to fifth. South End Fire Station, the same contractor is on the streetscape, so they'll, they will be scheduled simultaneously. If the, the contractor wants to delay the streetscape a little bit, we probably allow him to move out there and get started on the south, south end fire station driveway. That driveway's out of the way, really, and, and it's all concrete, so they could do that work as winter progressed without too much restriction. So we would hope to get that one started. One of those two should kick off, and we'll know in the next couple of weeks. Parks and Rec, there are the Parks Master Planning Project. We are looking forward to a discussion in more depth with the commission on the twenty-sixth, hopefully, if things go as planned. We will be making the final document available to you in the next, next few days. We're, we're expecting delivery of that anytime now. So we, we had a couple of maps redrawn and, and sent back to them, and, and so we cleaned up the document visually a little bit. And so we'll, we'll get that out to you in the next couple, couple of days, hopefully. Corporate Drive, Pearville Road, Waterline, Rich Smith is, is with us tonight, in case you have some questions for them. But the initial phases from Corporate Drive, the end of Corporate Drive to Pearville Road, from the bypass along Pearville Road to Coell Road, that, that is done. They'll be bringing that in service online this week. That project then will be left with some cleanup and some other little detail items of the scope, and then, then certainly we are expanding and, and seeking to expand that outwardly, both onto the west and also some improvements back towards the Corporate Drive, the Industrial Park Inn, and, and that will come back up in the next few weeks also, those will. Central Station, the fire station project, we are actively working with the architect to develop some concepts, both primarily of the floor plan, given the site restrictions that we have and the, the geometry. We have the survey completed. We've met with the fire department and looked at some elevations and, and ground elevations relative to the street driveway access, for example, grade. We, we've asked the fire, fire guys some of those questions, and we will be conducting some additional research where we conduct some site visits, and we will be proposing to the commission opportunities for you guys to visit some of the fire stations that we think are most appropriate in the next few weeks, probably in, in, in the way of technology or arrangement. So we'll, we'll be bringing, bringing that list forward pretty soon and, and making a couple of trips available for the commission. If you all would like to see those, we'd certainly encourage you to. We think that helps and, and puts things in perspective when we start talking about base sizes and door sizes and scales and things like that, and it puts it more in perspective on the, ultimately, the size of the structure that, that you're looking at, and, and then, then you can start to align the architectural look to it as, as time passes. Wastewater Facilities Upgrade, HDR will be, is, is here again on that matter, but we will be bringing you a proposal from them to proceed into the final design of Phase One. We've worked with that. Rich has done a good job producing information for staff to review, and so you'll be getting more information on that, a, a proposal from them to proceed in, in the next two weeks, the twenty-sixth. The stormwater program, we're still in Streamland, the consultant's doing some evaluation. We'll be meeting with them in the next first week of December, if all goes as planned, and then we'll follow that up with another public meeting in, inside of that subdivision as we did the first time back in the, the late summer. Sidewalk construction, there are a lot of moving parts there. We're, we're working on East Main, trying to get out. There was some, some right-of-way questions where the sidewalk now ends up to where the sidewalk we constructed terminated. There's a couple of properties in there. We've had some surveying done, some easements. We'll be working through that with these property owners that are in that area. We have one downtown, we, we, we need to address the corner on Church Street and Walnut. That will be ongoing as winter progresses, as it's concrete work, and we can work through winter more easily in those areas. We have Trailhead that we're looking at, where you accepted the Trailhead, the McClure Village easement a few weeks back. We're looking at some information on, on that layout and that project as well. We just completed some safety improvements along Lexan Avenue corridor on those sidewalks. Some of you saw the contractors out there doing some grinding and some, they were removing some sharp edges, some, some, some of the trip hazards potentially that, that existed. East Main, Hinson Trail, we got permission to bid to advertise for construction for that. That trail connects the existing trail on Stanford Avenue near McClure Village over to the East Main Pond area. We will be detailing the bid plans for that and advertising for construction within the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, bids will be received before Christmas, so that you all can consider that probably sometime in January. So that project will also move forward. And then transportation enhancements, transportation improvements. We have questions that we work on from time to time that not a lot of people see. We'll, we'll mention a couple of those. The questions that I, that I hear quite frequently is improvements to the intersections out there near Kroger, Skywatch, out there where the new Starbucks is. Would like everyone to know that we had worked, confirmed, we have worked with the state on, on some recommendations. We think we have something. The state has sent us some drawings that, that reflect essentially a median in that intersection, and so we will, we are working out what a design drawing would look like to accommodate the turning movements that the state gave us. And so we will be, we are actively working on then encouragement permit based on the drawing that we did, and, and hopefully, if that's approved, we will come back and just let you know exactly what we're gonna be doing out there before we do it, so that you are aware as, as, before that work happens, because I'm, we would anticipate you getting questions on that as, as the city starts breaking ground. But we are working on it, the state is working on it, and trying to cause improvements to occur. As we, we looked at that, we did come up with a couple of other ideas, and we think that there will be an opportunity for the city to maybe construct a little bit of, of minor collector street improvements in that area. We'll bring that back to you pretty soon. Won't be, probably won't be at the twenty-sixth, probably might be the meeting in, in December. We'll do a, a quick little layout and, and provide for you a discussion as we go into the budget year. That would be, would ultimately roll into the budget cycle, the budget conversation that we would have. So we, we hope to plant the seeds for some roadway improvements, and that, that we will discuss further as the budget proceeds in the spring. Baughman Avenue at the end, there were some pedestrian questions there and some, some bus movements and whatnot. We've, the, we are actively working on putting up a flashing caution light in that area at the end of Baughman. There's, there's two hills, hills there that prevent good line of sight, and so what we would like to do is augment that intersection by adding those caution lights. There's on Maple Avenue, north of the railroad track, there's a caution light in that area, be similar to that, where it's a, it's a little bit of a rise, probably a blind pullout. So it, it would be an enhancement to safety if we could install that flashing light. So we're gonna, we're working on that as we speak also. Those are the big things. Do y'all have any questions for us?
I've got a, I've got a comment on, on following up on, I was hoping Lisa Hargis would be here today. She's the lady that lives out there on, on Ghost Pike at, at Baughman Avenue, and she, she has seen too many hair-raising incidences, and, and she's fearful one of these days there's gonna be a coal truck that's gonna plow into the back end of a bus, and, and we're, we're gonna be on, on headline material, and that's not what we want at all. I was out there the other day, was behind one of the coal trucks, not coal trucks, excuse me, one, one of the rock trucks, and I thought, well, this'll be interesting, because here comes another one. Did they slow down at all? No, they just passed by each other. And, and I thought, we've got, somehow we've got to slow this down. There's just, there's no, if you need to pull off, there's nowhere to go. There's, there's a rock, there's a rock wall on one side and, and built-up rock on the other side, so.
Which way is the flashing light? Is it for the people pulling out, or, or is it gonna be maybe three ways?
Well, it's a caution light. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be like a three-way stop sign. It wouldn't, would not increase stopping movements. It's a warning for drivers. The, the first one we're looking at is on the northbound side, the rise, which is the most risky, because a truck's coming downgrade into the intersection. So if they come over the rise... So if they come over the rise and someone has stopped to turn left, that can't turn left immediately, the truck is coming downgrade. And so what you would like to do is put the caution light on the southbound side of that rise, near the top of it, so that a truck is aware that there's an intersection in front of you. So they will, a good truck driver would take a pause at that light at least.
So it'll be on, it'll be on the traffic on Ghost Pike?
It would be a Ghost Pike flashing light, yes. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, Earl, on the repairs that were done to the Lexington Avenue, the sidewalks. Heard a lot of positive comments, but of course, if person B sees that person A's sidewalk's getting fixed, they, of course, want theirs fixed. Do we have any money set aside for that again next budget year, or...
Some of the areas on Lexington Avenue are code enforcement areas that need replaced. The sidewalks that need replaced are not in our scope necessarily at this time. We are not doing those. That is a code enforcement issue that, along Lexington Avenue today. Saying that, we are expanding the process that we did into other areas, for example, along Fourth Street, the Second Street area. We are moving that around the pedestrian intense areas of downtown, so that safety is at least improved along those pedestrian routes. Certainly, if you want to expand that, that's a later discussion. We can have that and kick that off with the city manager at the workshop, for example. It's a good time to bring that up, if that's something you want to do.
Well, didn't the company that was doing the grinding, don't they have a scope that they assess which places need to be done and which don't?
Absolutely. The capacity of their machines is finite, it does have a limit, and so what they do is, as they go through, they locate the locations that they recommend a full sidewalk removal and replace, which is a more in-depth repair. So they've noted those. We have a location on all of those at this time. Well, not at this time, we'll have it in the next week or so, as we get their report in.
Okay. You said it was a code enforcement...
It becomes a code enforcement issue.
Can anyone explain that to us?
Well, the sidewalk repairs always been a code enforcement issue. It's not my department, it's not what I do, but that is a code...
Who's responsible for replacing the sidewalk?
In neighborhoods, the homeowner is. Downtown, in the areas where the city has already replaced the sidewalk, the city is accepting that responsibility. For example, on Main Street where the brick is, the city maintains that in front of City Hall is a good example, but also now along Third Street, north of Main to Broadway, the city will be ultimately maintaining that long time, because we put that sidewalk in.
Well, I wanted you to say that, when you say code enforcement, that once we tag it, it's up to the homeowner to get the sidewalk replaced, and we need to make sure we let people in these neighborhoods realize that, that they know this, and some of them do, but some people, you know, don't.
And based on Earl's comment, I just want to clarify, maintenance means the structural maintenance of them. It doesn't mean snow removal and things of that nature, which are, it's a proper time of year to start discussing this, are the business owner's responsibility that reside on Main Street.
Yes, yes. And Earl, I want to bring one other item up that you didn't mention, probably for a real good reason, but don't try to answer this tonight, but as I walk the streets of Danville, I got asked several times, too many times really, about water bills in Pearville from Danville residents. I guess they've heard all the...
Mr. Scott and I talked a little bit about that today.
Oh, did you? Okay. And what can we do about the communications about?
I think the communication is the issue, as we discussed. I don't want to front-run you on this, Ron, if you want to elaborate on what we discussed. Otherwise, I'll let you handle it with staff.
Well, I think it's fair to say that we will need in the year ahead, early in the year ahead, to communicate more effectively on the methodology used and the requirements and restrictions that were imposed upon Danville in terms of how we appropriately consider the factors that contribute to those rates in the various communities, because they are different. They're in accordance, and Earl could speak to this far better than I could, really, because he's knowledgeable of those engineering standards that are national in scope that must be followed. But I would say, we at the city have had complaints over the last several months about a number of factors with regard to water improvements. One is the new electronic read meters that we've put in, and fairly frequent, I wouldn't say always, but it was frequent enough that when we installed the new meters, they did not start correctly, so we, upon complaint, we reset those meters and gave credit to the historic usage of water for our residents, so that we'd get the accurate reading that we desire. I've had complaints from people in other, in Pearville or Junction City or both, who were complaining about high water usage, and when you look at the actual billings in those months of use, it translated into maybe 79 cents or 83 cents a day for water usage in the residential consumption. Now, those were not the problem. The problem was the fact that they were paid late, and you had penalties and cutoff fees that got those homeowners into a circular negative situation. It wasn't the actual rates themselves necessarily, but rather the, obviously, the budgeting of the money and making the timely payment. But I will be the first to agree that we need to do a better job of communicating the basis of the rates, and we'll plan to do that going forward.
I should also mention, too, I think as a succinct response to community questions, was that the city performed a rate, a water rate study, and the study was conducted to determine what costs were incurred to deliver water to different areas in the county. As the city is a regional water provider, the question then becomes, should the residents of Danville strike that? Should the taxpayers of Danville supplement the distribution of water to other municipalities or residents thereof? And I think from a philosophical standpoint, we say absolutely not. So the issue does become in communication, saying it would be, I would say unconstitutional for the taxpayers of Danville to supplement the payment of the distribution of water to people outside of the corporate limits of the city. I know that's rather succinct, but that's the most accurate portrayal of the issue, and while that doesn't show a lack of compassion on the part of staff or you as elected officials, it is what it is, and that fact can't be changed.
I actually spent probably more than an hour with Earl, maybe a month or so ago, and had him explain that to me, and after asking questions and also talking with Michelle, a lot of the people who had the high bills, either they discovered they had a leak that was on their side of the meter and not ours, and also there was a glitch in the meter when it was installed or what have you. So a lot of those were resolved and sort of fell back on the customer to correct the issues that were there. So I think most of them have been resolved, but you also take into consideration there are less people to share the costs in Junction City and Pearville than there are here.
And they were two old systems, that's how we purchased them as well, so...
You know, it's a blessing for the city to be a utility provider for the benefit of its residents, to control water and sewer is a blessing. However, when you're a regional provider of it, we're much more local than a KU or Kentucky American Water, and so the complaints can be readily heard the second and fourth Mondays of every month. So that's a big distinguishing fact.
And the bottom line is that providing water to Danville residents versus providing water to somebody outside of Danville, there's more expense to it, and we're not gouging anybody, we're just trying to do it at a reasonable rate, make it profitable for the city.
Yeah, and let me add, too, some of the confusion is that it's, there's two utilities. There's the water utility, and there's the sanitary sewer utility, and those are, one does not supplement the other. And those are two different costs that a customer can have on a bill, and some customers don't have sewer, for example, that are also, they're water customers. So when you hear a complaint, it is the perception that the user's only getting water, right? So it's a water bill, but it's really not. For example, in Fayette County, you would get a sanitary sewer bill from the city of Lexington and a water bill from Kentucky American. And so that when they would, so if you were to just look at your bill without identifying those differences, and you're looking at Kentucky American's average rate, they're not, on their bill is not what you have, right? You have a combined billing from two separate services provided by the city, right? And so it's important for the end user or the customer to understand what is on their bill, and we are working to communicate that. We have met with almost all the elected officials or those that were running over the course of the last couple of months, and we'll continue to do that. We will necessarily have to go meet with the folks in Pearville, in Junction City for that matter, and making sure that folks understand the components that make up the total cost that is on that utility invoice, and it's not a water bill, or it's not a, and so that is a misconception that allows for a misrepresentation of what is actually totalized there, right? And it's not intentional necessarily, it's a lot of times a misunderstanding of what's being represented. And so there's many components to it, and it is an active communication process that we have to engage in, and we'll continue to do that over the course of time, and so that that understanding can be enhanced.
Earl's made a good point there. We went over hundreds and hundreds of bills with individual customers, and normally I start by breaking it down, like he said, between water, sewer, but also you have to remember that they're getting a two-month bill, not a one-month bill, like some of the other people that they're comparing theirselves to, and when you get them to realize that, you know, and they go, well, mine's less than that, and it clicks in their mind, and when you start doing the math with them, and then you have to realize if they are in the city of Danville, then they also have trash on there, too. So you break it down even farther into six bills instead of, you know, four bills, and it gets broken down, you know, as you break it down, it gets more and more, and we went over, you know, hundreds and hundreds with people, breaking them down that way for them.
And thank you to Michelle and your staff for taking the brunt of most of that.
I'd like to switch gears real quick. First of all, that water plant park just gets tons of use every time I go by there. It's busy and it's a nice thing, so to finish that off will be great. What I really want to get some information on is, I'm glad we're moving forward with the McClure Village Trailhead, as well as the trail going from Stanford Road over to Henson Park, which will cause us to want to have a safe crossing there on Stanford Road. And as what was presented to us tonight, the McAfee Project, if I can call it that, may cause DOT to look at that road. Do you think there'll be any tie-in there that could come together, or at least make them aware that we would like a safe crossing, and please do look at that road in terms of width and turn lanes and a safe crossing?
Yeah, we will be looking at the crossing as the trail begins construction. We will be actively working with the state and seeing and identifying what improvements that we can make on right-of-way to accommodate the crosswalk, and we will see what those details, what they look like. We don't know, you know, I can't predict, but certainly your comments heard, and we'll carry that forward.
Anything else for Earl?
I just want to tell him thanks, that was a good report.
Yep, thanks, sir. Item 11 is Resolution Number 2018-11-13-02. This is the Bunker Gear Bid Award. I guess the first question is, what is bunker gear?
Bunker gear, that consists of, well, like most people in the public call it fire suits. That is just the coat and the pants portion of that. So what we're asking is your approval of Resolution Number 2018-11-13-02, an amount of $129,550 from 911 Fleet and Fire Equipment for the bunker gear, and also for the boots will be from Fire Department Service and Supply, an amount of $33,575.
Do I hear a motion from anyone on the Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-11-13-02 as presented.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner Atkins and Commissioner Cottle. We are in discussion. I see back here, we're talking about 50 jackets, right?
Yes, sir, at least. This is to outfit each firefighter with two separate sets of gear. That way, on a winter night, you go out at midnight and fight a fire and get wet, hot and sweaty, you don't have to go back to another one at 3:00 in the morning with that same set of gear on. And also with new studies of cancer and the carcinogens that our gear holds, that allows us to come back and wash that set without contaminating, without having to put on contaminated gear at the next call that you go to.
How long would you anticipate this equipment lasts?
Per NFPA standard, it's 10 years.
Okay. What is that much?
This is additional equipment, then. You already have one set, and this is the second set, is that what you're saying?
Well, this would be two sets for everyone. Normally, we buy two, three sets a year, but, so a lot of that is aging, and just because it has a shelf life of 10 years, some of our busier firefighters, it may not last but three, four, five years before it needs to be replaced, and we have several of those sets right now that we're still using that need to be replaced.
Was this part of your budget request for this year or next?
That is part of the capital, yes.
Okay.
Any further questions? Seeing none, chair called question, the vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries. I believe we have reason for an executive session?
Yes, sir, we request that we go into executive session for the purpose of personnel and also to discuss potential property acquisition.
Personnel and property acquisition. Commissioner Cottle, you want to make a motion?
I move that we go into executive session regarding potential real property acquisition for which publicity at the present stage might or would likely affect the value per KRS 61811B, and for the purpose of personnel, to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61811F.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Sears. Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries, we are in executive session. Settle down and move into, back into regular session.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Commissioner Terry, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries, we're in regular session. Mr. Scott?
Tonight, we have some personnel actions to recommend, and I'll ask our city clerk, human resources director, Ms. Peak, to recite those.
Thank you.
Staff would ask that you hire John Castle to the position of city engineer with the usual probationary measures. So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry, how about a second?
Second.
Thanks, Rick. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries, continue.
We would also ask that you approve the hiring of Nina Wesley as a 911 telecommunicator with the usual probationary measures.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries.
And then we would also ask that you approve the promotion of two firefighters, Matt Groves and... and David Spanier, to the position of lieutenant with the usual probationary measures.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries.
Congratulations to all.
If there's no further business to come before this body, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, have a good evening.